I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council for January 20th, 2020. And I would like the Troop 101 Scouts to come forward with their leaders and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have the roll, please.
Belzak.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. Takes us to questions and comments of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to present to the City Council now rather than wait till the end of the meeting? This could be on any, it could be on an agenda item or it could be on any general idea. If none, we move on to the approval of minutes for January 6th, 2019. I'd like a motion to approve.
Twenty twenty.
For 2020, excuse me. Yeah. The date's wrong. Moved by Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Questions or comments regarding the minutes? If none, the roll.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The minutes have been approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the Alderman have communications they'd like to share with the council? Alderman Kenny.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of communications. I have first one from Boy Scout Eric DeFresny from the 1500 block of Sequoia is working, I think he's with the same troop as 101 here, if I'm not mistaken. He wants me to talk about the U.S. Constitution and how it pertains to us here on a legislative matter. And I'm going to be reading up on that real quick. It's been thirty something years since I read about that. Good Lord. I also have a communication from Marie Becker, 1600 block of Claire Court. I've let Mr. Gombach know this, this evening. They have, they've been battling some water issues between their backyard and some of the neighbors and where the waters are going. There's been some trees planted that have since died, so I've given that information to Mr. Gombach here this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one communication from Mr. John Pearson who's here tonight, who inquired about the burglies that's been happening in the neighborhood and home invasions. I think he shared his concerns of what, he asked what our strategy would be, and I think Chief Thomas is going to weigh in on that tonight, so.
Anyone else? Alderman Sullivan.
I just wanted to announce that the Darien Historical Society is having their Sunday Dinner this Sunday, January 26th, 2020. You can still get tickets. I recommend contacting them on their website. And no tickets are available at the door, but it does start Sunday, the 26th of January at 1:00 PM at Alpine Banquets. And it's always a very great evening, afternoon, I should say, dinner and entertainment.
Thank you. Anyone else? That takes us to the Mayor's Report, and it's always nice to have a Mayor's Report when you're recognizing people. And tonight, we have a young woman with us who is responsible for our 2020 Darien Vehicle sticker. Her name is Ella Hardman. She's the daughter of Vicky and Hugh Hardman. And I wanted Ella to come in tonight, and I wanted to recognize her as the artist who sketched The Lion's Head, which represents the 50th anniversary of the Darien Lions Club. So Ella, can you come forward? We want to give you one of our pins that you could wear representing the city. And we'd like you to say a few words, and I think you have something they want to put on there.
Thank you so much for the opportunity for me to be able to represent Darien through my art. Thank you to Mr. Hyatt for making this happen. And really thankful to be able to be a part of this community and be able to go to Hinsdale South High School. They have such a great art program, and I'm very fortunate to be able to be a part of this community, so thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Congratulations. Just for the record, Ella is one of the great art students that we have from Hinsdale South High School. If you go upstairs in our lobby, the art students from Hinsdale South High School just finished our lobby painting last week. We're going to be having a special reception for them. They did a picture of Darien past and, past and present. They have the old lay school, the new Darien welcome sign, the old lay school sign. They have the clock tower. They have the library right around the corner. So we've got, we've received a lot of nice artwork from the Hinsdale South. And Ella, thank you very much for, for your contribution. We truly appreciate it. Not being an Eagle Scout, but knowing how difficult it is to become an Eagle Scout, it's always nice to recognize young people who've achieved that status. Tonight, we have Tim Habenreiser here. He's the, I believe, the, not the troop master, right?
Correct, Mayor. Assistant Scout Master.
All right.
And Father.
We have, but tonight, we also have Committee Chair Mike Spicuzzo. And the Darien Lions Club is the corporate sponsor of Troop 101. So we have Mr. Kerry Spitsenigle here tonight. Kerry is the corporate sponsor. Kerry gets to go to all the PAC 36 meetings and all the Troop 101 meetings. So thank you, Kerry, for all your hard work. And thank you for bringing it to my attention that we had these fine young men who would have achieved the Eagle Scout status. So could I have Cole Habenreiser, Connor Habenreiser, and could I have Debbie Kornick? Debbie's son, Scott, is away at Seton Hall. He had to return to college. And so he's not here tonight to be able to be recognized. Connor Habenreiser actually received his Eagle Scout status in 2016, but could not make it to the City Council meeting. So tonight, we're going to give Connor a certificate as well. So gentlemen, you want to come forward? This is for Cole. I want you to wear our Darien pin. This is for Connor. I'd like you to have one of our Darien pins. This is for Scott, and you're Scott's brother.
Yeah.
What's your name?
Adam.
Adam. This is Adam, and you're working towards your Eagle status. Congratulations. Make sure your brother gets that.
Let me get a picture, guys.
Congratulations, guys.
Great.
And Cole, we're going to get a new certificate for you because the mayor made a mistake on your certificate. So if you open it up, you'll see my boo-boo. And so we'll get you a new certificate, and I'll make sure you get that, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations, guys. By the way, one of, one of our own council members, Mr. Alderman Tom Clistic, is an Eagle Scout, so wow. That takes us to the next item on the Mayor's Report, and that's our NYMEC presentation. I'd like to introduce Mr. David Hoover from NYMEC. And we're going to be able to show you a PowerPoint on our screen. I don't know if everybody can see that, but we'd like you to take a look at that. You might want to raise that microphone, David.
Good evening. My name is David Hoover with NYMEC. I've had the privilege of working with the city for over ten years, helping to purchase your electricity for village operations. We also previously managed the municipal aggregation program that the city ran from 2012 to 2014. And if I can, just take a quick step back. A municipal aggregation program is something that the residents authorized the city to do by passing a referendum in 2012. And it enables the municipality to procure electricity at more favorable rates or may favorable terms than the ComEd rate. We did that from 2012 to 2014. We saved the average single-family homeowner in Darien about $350 over that period of time, and saved about two and a half million dollars in the municipality. Unfortunately, markets change, and in 2014, the ComEd rate became more attractive. And so we've returned residents to ComEd since that point in time. But we continue to seek to see if there are other favorable opportunities available. And the good news is there are. It's not, you know, rate savings available to the residents at this time. The ComEd rate still is equally favorable. What we are proposing is to restart the municipal aggregation program. The rate that the residents would pay is exactly the same of what the residents would pay without the program. So our program matches the ComEd rate. The difference is that we procure 100% green energy for the, for the program. So there's no additional cost. There's no savings. There's no way that the rate can cost more or less. It's a pure match on a monthly basis, and it's just procured with 100% green energy. And then the, the other positive aspect of the program is that suppliers are willing to incent municipalities to move forward with this program and will provide a civic contribution to the municipality. And then the winning supplier that we've proposing is a company called MC Squared here in Chicago. And they are offering a annual civic grant to the municipality of Darien for $50,000 a year. And I believe it's the mayor's intention to use those for renewable or sustainable projects that, in town, such as charging stations or things of that nature. Just to say, the, the difference in this program than the, than the previous program is that some of the, at the, at the supplier's discretion, some of the residents will, accounts will be moved to MC Squared. Some of the residents' accounts will stay at ComEd for the power supply. But it doesn't matter because everybody, regardless of which group you're in, will be charged the ComEd rate. So there's no difference whatsoever which group you're in. Again, you'll still be billed by ComEd. And if you have any issues with your service, you would call ComEd. All residents will be charged that exact same rate, but the renewable energy will be purchased for all residents, whether, whichever group you're in. At the end, I'm going to give you a little information about how the renewable energy is essentially delivered into Darien. We'll, we'll show you a little something about that. Some of the reduction equivalents, it's hard to say, you know, tons of greenhouse gases. So what we've tried to do is to put those in a little more comparable terms, and it's comparable to, the, the Darien program, if enacted on an annual basis, would be comparable to removing 110 million auto miles driven on an annual basis. Another way to say that is there's 49 million pounds of coal that wouldn't be burned. So that's the, that's why we're doing this, and that's the sustainability favorable part of the program. The EPA is very involved in this. We will, with the supplier, put an application to the EPA for their green power partner status. And they will issue two large signs to be put on the roads to acknowledge that you would become a green power partner. The other thing they do, interestingly enough, is they, through these, through all the communities who apply for this, the EPA ranks communities throughout the United States as to the greenest communities, and that, they calculate that for the total, the amount of green energy consumed in a town compared in, as a percentage of the total energy. And because of this program, the municipal aggregation program, taking, you know, almost all of the residents, you will qualify for that. And on the next slide, you'll see the top six spots in the United States today are communities that have enacted this program to date. And so some of them are nearby, obviously, in Elley Grange Park and, and Tinley Park and some other towns that are nearby. These are the top communities in the United States.
Quick question. What, what impacts the fluctuations in the, in the percentages?
Yeah, it's a good question. The aggregation programs include all the residents who have not previously selected another power supplier.
Okay.
Which is around 10 to 15% of the community. Nor does it include the commercial accounts.
Oh, okay.
It includes very small commercial. So really, the answer to your question is, if you're a bedroom community with no commercial presence in town, our aggregation program will take around 85% of the total energy consumed. And you can see Elley Grange Park and Park, Payless Park are great examples of that. The more commercial that you have, the lower you would be. My, my guess is, based on our previous, that you guys will certainly be in the top 25 in the country. That will come, it'll take about six months for them to put the application through, and we'll come back and circle back and let you know the results of that when we're all done. The way renewable energy credits, the way the green energy works is whenever a wind farm generates power, you can't direct those electrons into Darien, okay? And once a green electron is, is generated and put into the grid next to a brown electron, the electrons are electrons. And so they are fungible, they're co-mingled. And so we have a, just about three and a half minute presentation that I think will give you a little bit better idea of how the green energy works through this, something called a renewable energy certificate. And this is put out by the EPA, by the way.
Let's take a wind turbine, for example. For every megawatt hour of electricity it produces, the turbine's owner generates a rec that they can either keep or sell. If you buy the rec, you are now the owner of that green power. Recs allow you to claim that the electricity you used came from a renewable resource, oh, or zero emissions. In fact, anytime someone claims to use renewable electricity, recs are involved. Even if you produce your own renewable power on site, you're generating your own recs. Recs are part of every renewable energy purchase. And they're a credible way to buy and sell renewable electricity, because recs can be uniquely numbered and tracked, just like an online bank account that keeps track of your electronic banking transactions. Anytime a rec is sold, there are systems that track and record it. Once you buy a rec and say that you're using green power, the rec can no longer be sold or used by someone else. The rec can be retired in the tracking system to prevent someone else from claiming it. EPA recommends buying recs that are certified and verified. This ensures that your green power was generated by a quality renewable resource. What you bought was actually produced. Why are recs so important? Because they are the currency of the renewable energy market. They allow people and organizations to choose cleaner sources of energy and reduce their carbon footprints. Recs give you the flexibility to support renewable energy even if you can't generate it yourself, or if your local utility doesn't offer a green power product. If recs did not exist, it would be difficult to say for sure that you're using renewable electricity. In today's electricity market, recs really do make a difference. By buying recs, you're providing revenue to support renewable energy projects. When enough people buy recs, these purchases promote growth in the green power marketplace and help to avoid greenhouse gas emissions across the country. For more information about recs and how they work, visit the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Green Power Partnership at www.epa.gov.
And if I can clarify one, one point. The, the video says that when you buy a rec, just to be clear, the supplier, MC Squared, is contractually committed to buy those recs on your behalf to an amount equal to your annual consumption. So they will purchase those recs, and then, once they do, we will notify you where those wind farms are and where they, where they purchase those recs. And again, they retire those recs so they can't be resold. And so, again, just the way recs work, real quickly, is let's just assume it costs them broadly, let's say $100,000 to purchase their recs for your community. Those rec, the, those funds work their way back to the actual wind generation farm to help defray the cost and incent them for additional investment in green energy. Let me, let me just see what questions you may have.
David, there, on social media, a couple people were putting out questions about rates cheaper than Commonwealth at us. And when you were in the office the other day, we talked a little bit about that. But you noted some of the issues with some energy suppliers that might go to people's homes and say, we're cheaper than ComEd. Can you explain what some of those problems are?
Right. First, just to be, just to let you know, we, before we implement a program like this, we first check, we continually check to see if there are rates that are less expensive from our suppliers for Darien, much like we did the original aggregation program, where it generated these savings to the residents. We did test those again, and the rates that we came back with from our suppliers were above the ComEd rate. So that's purchasing it in bulk for, you know, all the residents in the aggregate. Now, that said, there are occasions where suppliers will come in and offer rates lower than the ComEd rate. And I have seen that in general. I have not seen rates from anybody on a sustained basis that are more attractive, because generally what happens, just to speak broadly, if a supplier offers a rate below the ComEd rate, it will be for a short duration period, and at the end of that period, they will increase that for a period of time. So if a resident wants to take advantage of one of those other rates, that's great. That's what the whole environment is for. I would just encourage them to stay on top of that on a pretty, almost on a monthly basis when they get the bill, to make sure that their rates don't change. Suppliers are known to increase the rates after an initial period.
David, could you talk a little bit about the process and how Darien residents will become informed?
Right. So in, if, if this motion passes tonight and you proceed in this, in about two to three weeks, residents will get a letter, all residents in town will get a letter. It'll be from, it'll be on, on city letterhead. So we communicate, and it'll explain the entire program, and it'll give residents a chance to opt out if they don't want to participate in this program. And just a quick note, no one from our suppliers or the city will come to your door to solicit you. They won't come to your door, they won't, they won't call you on the phone. The only way we will communicate to folks is through mail, and there will be phone numbers and email contacts if anybody wants to inquire, ask additional questions.
David assured us the other day that the company that we're dealing with has a very high customer service reputation.
Yeah.
Which was something that I thought was critical to the selection. I know we bid out and we wanted to see how much we were going to get with regard to the grant, but it just so happened that the company with the highest customer service record also provided the highest grant.
The ICC here in Illinois tracks suppliers, tracks the number of complaints a supplier receives versus the number of accounts they serve. They have a rating of one to five stars. And MC Squared has a five-star rating. And then just anecdotally, we work with a number of suppliers and done a number of these programs. And they, they excel in good customer service, so pleased to recommend them.
Brian.
Dave, could you reiterate the criteria for the civic grant? There, there is a, a certain level that if it were to go beneath, that we wouldn't have the grant, and it's, it's not realistic to think we would ever go under that. But could you just cover that, please?
Sure. This is based, their civic grant is based on the participation of a certain number of residents in the program. When they start off with that, they know pretty much what those numbers are, because they have a historical idea of what the opt-out rates are. And so they start off with a base this much. There is something in the contract that says that if they drop below a certain level, they'll reevaluate that civic contribution. But for them to hit that threshold, I think you'd have to lose about a, at least a third of the residents who are participating in the program on day one. And over a two-year period, I've never seen anything close to those levels. But fair disclosure, if, for whatever reason, all the door-to-door solicitors happen to target Darien for the next two years, and it does drop down, and, and roughly a third of the residents in the program do leave, then they would, we would step back in and have another conversation about that civic contribution.
I've been asked by residents who live in some of our unincorporated areas that are, they look like Darien, they've got Darien zip codes, but they're not Darien, if they could participate in this program. And David told me that what those who are part of, get their services from DuPage County or the township, they would have to have a referendum at the county level for the county. And that referendum would have to be passed by all those municipalities that fall within that township or fall within the county for them to be able to go with electric aggregation. So all, all of our Hinswood and all our other areas here in Darien cannot participate in the program unless that referendum takes place at that level.
Correct.
Anything else? Any questions for David? We're going to have this on our agenda under new business tonight, so we'll be voting on this tonight. Eric? Yeah. Is it possible to run out of these recs?
I mean, it is possible, but the supplier will purchase those at the beginning of the program, so we would, we would.
So Darien will end up getting one of these recs?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And it, and it's, it basically, it's, it's a supply and demand. There's a very small market of these. And so if they get in short supply, then the cost of those are just going to increase, and the supplier is contractually bound to purchase those.
Okay.
So it's on them.
Okay.
And again, just to be clear, they will send you, will, will send it to the staff. And again, just to be clear, they will send you, will send to the staff, the listing of the actual recs and what wind farms are generated from. So, yes. And then, again, just to be clear, they're retired, and then they can't be resold, so...
Okay.
Does this have any effects for anyone that currently has solar? I have a few residents that have solar, whether it's the Tesla panels, I'm looking at potentially going with Sunrun this summer. Does that have any effects on the leases or contracts with those firms?
Right. So those residents will be on a net metering agreement with ComEd right now, which just says that, basically, you know, if the, we're at the meter at the end of the day, if it's positive, they buy, you know, they're buying power, if it's negative, they're going to be selling power to ComEd. Those residents are excluded from this program, okay? They're going to be informed about it, but they're going to be excluded from this program because they're already on a unique status, as is.
Anyone else? This will be our new business item tonight. David, thank you very much. David made a presentation to our environmental committee earlier this evening, so we appreciate your time.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Mayor's Letter to Businesses. As many of you know, we have an Economic Development Committee that we formed this year. One of the charges of the Economic Development Committee is to maintain businesses within the city and seek new businesses within the city. One of the items that they're promoting is this idea of going out and actually visiting businesses within the city who seek help or seek to provide input. If you noticed, on the inside cover of the Neighbors magazine that came out in January, we ran a half-page ad asking business to provide input to the city. We recently, as of just last week, sent out a letter from my office to 51 businesses, brick-and-mortar businesses within the city, telling them that our Economic Development Committee would like their input with regard to business in the city of Darien, what we could be doing to assist them. Those letters went out. When the feedback comes, we're going to send our EDC members out to those businesses, hopefully with a brochure and their business card, to listen to these business people within our community, to find out if indeed there's something the city of Darien could be doing to assist them. So I just wanted to update you. The first 51 letters went out, I believe, Thursday or Friday last week. We'll be sending out another 50, but we're going to wait till the initial wave of input comes and they make their initial visits, and then we'll send out the next 50. We currently have 235 brick-and-mortar businesses within the city of Darien. We have a number of home businesses, but we're going to hit all 235 of those businesses with the letters, and we're going to see how many of them actually respond to us and ask for us to visit them and talk to them. So I just wanted to update the council on that. The next item is Brookhaven Travel. As many of you know, we were looking to put a restaurant in the Dunkin' Donuts site, the current Dunkin' Donuts site, when Dunkin' Donuts moves to the corner, the new building that's going to be built by Mr. Manos. Unfortunately, and part of that was going to be not only the Dunkin' Donuts site, but the travel agency, which is right next door. And unfortunately, word got out somehow that Linda Copats, who owns that business, was going to retire and end her business. Well, that's not true. Linda is not going to end her business. Linda is actually going to move to another site in the building, in the center. I went over and saw her, actually, I went over there to see her on Friday. Two of her associates were in the office, and they were so kind to call her on the phone. And I spoke to her on the phone, and I said, "Somehow, if the city was responsible for that misperception, we apologize. We're looking to keep businesses in Darien, not lose businesses in Darien." And Linda was really nice about it. She said, "I thank you for coming in, and I appreciate that you came in to at least explain this to me." And I said, "And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to announce at city council meeting on Monday night that Brookhaven Travel is still there and will still be there. So if you want to make some travel arrangements with Brookhaven, they will be there, but they're going to move to another site in the Brookhaven Shopping Center. We don't know when, but that is going to take place." So I wanted to bring you up to date with regard to that. The next item is our census update. We're, as you know, we formed a Complete Count Census Committee. On February 12th, our committee will take shape. We're going to name secretary, we're going to make appointments. On 3/11, we're going to provide outreach efforts. On April 8th, we're going to have more outreach efforts. We're going to have targeted outreach-based census response updates in May, and in 6/10, June 10th, we're going to be completing the process. Now, we are running PSAs every week on our Darien Direct Connect. On 1/3, we ran, "What is the census? The Census Made Simple." This coming Friday will be Census 2020 Frequently Asked Questions. February 7th will be the message, "Why We Ask for Census Data." Every Friday on Direct Connect, there will be a PSA, a public service announcement, it's a small video, couple minutes long. We are still looking for people to serve on our Complete Count Census Committee. We're looking for people who have contact with churches, with our schools, and even though we've made contact with Hinsdale South, we've made contact with District 61, we've made contact with District 63, we would like people on our Complete Count Committee who will work directly with them. Last week, I met with Stephanie Gregoni with the Darien Park District, and Stephanie assured me that either she or Matt will serve on the Complete Count Committee, and that they will hand out materials, they'll post flyers, and they'll even have a terminal at the Park District Building where senior citizens or anyone who doesn't have a computer can go to do their census. And just so everybody knows, you're going to get a card the second or third week in March that's going to invite you to complete the census. 95% of the American population will get that card, and that will ask you to go online and complete the census. Now, 5% of that 95% will also get paper copy, and they'll be asked to complete that on paper. The other 5%, to make the 100%, are children who are away in college, people who are in nursing homes, and the Census Bureau will take care of that. Our goal is to have as many people counted as possible. For every person counted, the state of Illinois gets $1,500. And that money goes to schools, money goes to, not only does it determine your representatives in Congress, but it, a lot of it comes back into a community like Darien. So we want to make sure that this count is, we get as many people counted as possible. I still need individuals who want to be on the Complete Count Committee. So not only am I talking to the audience here tonight, but I'm talking to the people who will see this on Channel 6. If you are interested in serving on that committee, please let me know. I do appreciate it. Now, we're also advertising for census workers. Well, the United States Census Bureau is advertising, we're putting out the advertisement. In DuPage County, a census worker will get paid $29.50 an hour to work, and that's primarily going to take place after the initial count takes place. So that's our update. Every meeting, I'll be updating the information. We have it on our website, excuse me, on our, we put it out on Direct Connect, we have it on our website. If you have any questions, you can contact me, or you can contact Joe Hennerfin, who's our city planner. Joe is our coordinator for the entire program. So that pretty much brings me to the end of my mayor's report, except one very important item, and that is the naming of our 2020 Darien Citizen of the Year. And I believe our liaison, Mary Sullivan, will read that letter.
It's my honor. The nomination of the 2020 Citizen of the Year. A Chinese proverb reads, "Truly great friends are hard to find, difficult to leave, and impossible to forget." As the 2020 Citizen of the Year Committee read this submitted nomination, this proverb radiates the feelings of the committee of the whole. What a marvelous person to give to so many organizations, schools, society functions, and indeed life for such a long period of time. It was a unanimous choice. Therefore, it is with a great pride that the Citizen of the Year Committee submits to the Darien City Council the name of Alita Pecknick as our choice for the 2020 Citizen of the Year. When asked if she would accept the nomination, she noted how very humbled she was to be a part of Darien's Citizen of the Year legacy. Alita has a long history in Darien and surrounding communities. Alita and her husband Tom have been married for 50 years. They moved to 72nd Street in Darien in 1974. They are proud parents of Leslie, a resident of Downers Grove, and Melissa, along with her husband Mike, and granddaughters Danielle, Kelly, and Taylor, and they are all residents of Darien. Since 1974, Alita has been deeply involved in their parish, Our Lady of Peace. Since 2006, she has served as the bereavement minister, helping families grieving the loss of loved ones who have passed away. She has the responsibility of planning the funeral services and masses. Alita has planned over 80 funerals, working with families through a painful and difficult time. Her grace, compassion, and love are a lasting connection with families she has assisted. You will also find her as a greeter at every Sunday's 10:30 morning mass. She enjoys welcoming parishioners to the service and extending a hand of fellowship. She notes this kind and welcoming gesture gives her personally an uplifting feeling of well-being. For over 10 years, she has been a member of the Divine Mercy Cynical of the Parish. She also serves as a eucharistic minister, lector, and on other church committees as needed. "No one is more cherished in this world than someone who lightens the burden of another." Unknown author. Alita serves on the No One Dies Alone team at Hinsdale and La Grange Hospitals, again, providing a compassionate and caring presence for the terminally ill patients in hospice care. She also serves at Hinsdale Hospital as an escort, helping patients find their way to parts of the hospital that can be difficult to find. She is currently a member of the District 61 Citizens Advisory Committee, since 2003, a member of the Darien Historical Society, since 2004, younger-than-ever senior club, and in the past, the Darien Women's Club, where she chaired the committees of finance, home life, conservation, and community improvement. For over 13 years, she has been a devoted caregiver at the Rever Court Memory Care in Bolingbrook, working tirelessly to support and care for a cousin who suffers several health and mental issues. "The meaning of life is to find your gift. The purpose in life is to give it away," quote from William Shakespeare. A member of the Darien Environmental Committee from the city of Darien Council, since 2008, Alita attends regularly the Argon Roundtable meetings that include updates on Argon projects and nuclear waste disposal. She was recently appointed to the city's Holiday Home Decorating Committee, and in October 2019, received the Distinguished City's Heart of Darien Award. From 1981 to 1989, Alita served as a teacher's aide in the physically handicapped classrooms at Concord School in Darien. In 1989, she graduated from Elmhurst College with a bachelor's degree in elementary education. In 1990, she was hired by Charles J. Saws Elementary School in Central Stickney as a teacher in the gifted program for second and fifth graders. And in 1994, Alita earned an endorsement in the gifted program from National Lewis University. She graduated from Purdue University's Teacher Facilitators Program in order for Saws eighth grade students to participate in a simulation space mission program called Rendezvous with a Comet at Purdue's West Lafayette campus. This program still functions today for the eighth grade students at Saws. While at Saws, Alita was initiator and facilitator for the following after-school programs: Star Reading Program, Solar Car Project in conjunction with Argon National Laboratory, and assisted as a curriculum developer for a summer program on landfill design and engineering, again, with Argon. In 1995, she was honored with the Distinguished Recognition Award from President Clinton for her project work with students in the landfill environment program. In 1997, Saws School recognized her with the Heart of Saws Teaching Award. Alita retired in 2004 from Saws, but continues to serve as a substitute teacher at the school. She has a wonderful rapport with present and past students, sharing stories, helping them make good choices in life and character, doing the right things, and being a role model whenever and wherever she can to them. She is indeed a role model to and within the city of Darien. A quote from Oscar Wilde, "The smallest act of kindness is worth more than the grandest intention." Asked what she would do in her free time, she quickly responses, "I am diligent in walking two miles a day on my treadmill." She rides her bike and walks through the community regularly. Alita and Tom are travelers, always looking for the next place to visit. They are tenured subscription members of the Drury Lane Theater, love live Broadway productions, and enjoy fine dining. A nominator states, "My grandmother puts her heart and soul into everything she does. She has made a big difference in so many lives that she has come in contact with, with her positive and compassionate attitude." Alita noted to the committee this honor is a legacy in her life. Indeed, she is and will always be a legacy to the city of Darien. By city ordinance, our guidelines for selecting the Citizen of the Year are diversity of activities, length of service, degree of involvement in the community, and impact to the city. Alita certainly satisfies all these categories and then some. City Council, we present to you Alita Pecknick as our choice for the Darien 2020 Citizen of the Year. Respectfully submitted, the Darien Citizen of the Year Committee.
I'd like a motion to approve the naming of our Alita Pecknick as our Citizen of the Year. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. End the vote.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
It's been approved. Bonnie, would you like to come forward and fill us in on dates, the coffee, and the dinner? Bonnie Cussera is the chairperson. Then again, my thanks to the committee, Bonnie Cussera, Jim Gutzinger, Jerry Cussera, Carol Mallers, Linda Baroviak, and we're going to count Lou Mallers in there too, because he picks everybody up and drives people around. But thank you very much, committee. And Ralph Beardsley and Ron Kiefer as well. Ron's not here, so I think he's out of town.
Ralph Beardsley. Ralph Beardsley. Oh, did he? Oh, okay. Thank you for considering Alita and approving her this evening. It was a great honor for us to read her nomination and move forward with it. Our next recognition will be on Tuesday, February 18th. It will be the Coffee and Cake, which will be held after council meeting. Then, we will be taking reservations for the dinner, starting January 27th through February 28th. And the dinner will be held on Saturday, March 7th, at Alpine Banquet, from, starting at 6 o'clock, to, and then dinner is at 7 o'clock. Cost is $35 per person, includes a family-style dinner of roast pork, chicken, marinade pasta, and assorted vegetable soup and so forth. Open bar for four hours. DJ, good time for everybody. So I hope you all will attend.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Thank you to your committee as well. Anybody want to make a comment?
Yeah, I do, actually. You know, we didn't have a Citizen of the Year last year because we couldn't find somebody who was able to fit the mold there. And our letter didn't just drop out of the earth in 2019 and popped up again back here in 2020. So what I'm telling residents is, like Chief Thomas says, if you see something, say something. We, you know, our letter should have been this last year, and would have been great for her on her 50th anniversary. There's plenty of people in the city of Darien that have, that have her accolades, maybe not her accolades per se, but based on what Alderman Sullivan just read, but there's plenty of people out there. We just got to make sure that we acknowledge it, and we say something and bring it forward.
Thank you, Alderman Kenny. Mary?
And I just want to echo what Alderman Kenny said. I think that people don't realize that the citizens need to nominate and provide the endorsement of another citizen in order for them to be considered by the Citizen of the Year Committee. So, you know, I urge people to do that. So, you know, I urge people to do that, you know, start a little file or start talking to friends about who you can, you know, encourage others to write as well, because I think the more the committee hears about individuals, the better. And we have some, we have had, if you go into the hallway, some amazing individuals in the past, and I have no doubt in the future, we will have more. But I could not be more thrilled with, some people call her Arletta, some people call her Alita, but, you know, she wanted to be referred to as Alita today, and an amazing woman, and we had the pleasure of recognizing her in the fall, thanks to Mayor Marquez, and I'm really looking forward to celebrating her in the next two months.
Yeah, I would like to say, I know her through church. She's probably one of the sweetest people you're ever going to meet. She greets me every Sunday on 10:15 mass as we walk in. She's really a sweetheart of a lady. She's got a kind heart. He's not a prophet, but Muhammad Ali made a comment. He says, "Service to others is the rent we pay for our place in heaven." Well, Alita's going to get a good place in heaven because she's paid a lot of rent to others in terms of her service. So, great choice, committee. Nice job. Really appreciate all your hard work. And now we, let's hope we get a lot of people to buy those tickets and come out and join us that evening. Thank you again to the committee. That takes us to our city's Clerk's Report. Joanne?
No report this evening.
Our city Administrator's Report? No report, Mayor. Department had information questions. Any questions for the chief? I think, Greg, you want to talk tonight?
Sure, I don't have a formal report. The December report is always the annual report, and just by uniform crime reports, standards, and policies, it actually doesn't get done until, it's an odd date, it's like February 22nd. And so anyway, we have some work to do to get that finished up and out. But we did have a good meeting with the Police Committee tonight. We talked about two major issues, one being burglary and motor vehicles, and one being residential burglary, so talk about that a little bit. I think when we talk about crime, we always have to keep it in perspective. And when we talked a while ago, when we started talking about putting more tweets out there and more information, I think that's been wonderful. We went, a few years ago, when we had Nixwell, I think we had 387 people that would follow us. Now with Twitter, we have over 1,200 people following us. And then we put out information about each burglary to motor vehicle or clusters of motor vehicle over the night. We might say, last night, there was three burglaries, or burglary to motor vehicles in this certain area. So, it has good and bad, and I'll tell you the good first, is that 10 years ago, we had 111 burglary to motor vehicles. In 2014, we had 51 burglary to motor vehicles. Last year, we had 41 burglary to motor vehicles, and this year, we had 36. I think, perspective-wise, when you see those tweets and that information, I think it's the inverse, and people think there's a bigger problem than what there is. It's actually gone down and drawn down significantly over the past few years. We did have another spike in 2017. Regardless, it's come down quite a bit. And I think that, again, the double-edged sword with the social media, giving that information out, people locking their cars, I think has helped reduce that 111 number down to 36. 36 is still too many. The idealistic view would be zero, the realistic view, I don't know. Less than 36. We'll get there.
Chief, during this meeting this evening, you let us know that 98% of those burglaries to motor vehicle, their cars were left unlocked?
Correct. That is my comment about how to fix this matter. The easiest fix is lock the car. Applies to everybody. My son lives fairly close to me, does not lock his truck, his work truck, and had the laptop taken out of it. So it happens to everybody. I have frequent discussions with my wife, who likes to leave a key hidden, which really isn't hidden. So, it's on top of the refrigerator in the garage, just because it's hidden there. Nobody can see on top of the refrigerator, come on. And you know that. So, now everybody's going to go to my house, but nothing in there anyway, so good luck. So it happens to everybody, and it's so easy to forget about it. You know, I don't have anything in my car that worth stealing. And so then when these individuals come out from the city, usually in a stolen car, and then they let people out, the car drives to the other end of the block while the people are trying to find any car that's open, they actually want to steal the car. So they're looking in the glove box, looking in the console, they're looking in the different cubby holes for either the fob or the key in order to try to steal the car. Not able to steal the car, they'll take the change. This is one stat I didn't look up, but I'm going to try to see. I would venture to guess that most burglary motor vehicles, on average, have less than $20 worth of merchandise stolen out of them. There's been others that were fairly high. I think there was one with $10,000 worth of stuff in there, and I don't recall if that one was locked or not, but does happen that there's more things of value, but again, usually less. I didn't look at 2019, and I'm pretty sure that that 98% was just phenomenal to me. Coming from Aurora, I think that wasn't like the 85 percentile was unlocked. And here, it was 98%. So I rerun that number a couple different times, but it is an actual number that, just locking up the car is simple. I think hitting that little fob and locking it up and things will help. Take valuables out of your home, into your home. If you're away from the home, trunk it or take it. Think of everything else we talked about. So, a caution, you know, a lot of people leave their garage door opener in the car, leave the car unlocked. You just gave access to the lease to the garage and possibly to the house. We haven't, I don't recall any of those type of burglaries. We'll talk about residential burglaries in a second, but lock your stuff up. Take your stuff in the house, please. And I know a number of Aldermen have made that same plea, so we'll just make that plea again. Last, whether it's burglary motor vehicle or residential burglary, I forget, somebody mentioned it already, see something, say something. So if you're better prepared than a police officer driving through the neighborhood of knowing what belongs and what doesn't belong. So if there's a suspicious car, suspicious person, or suspicious circumstances, dial 911. There's no problem with us coming out and investigating, making sure that what is there is supposed to be there. No problem. So then I'll switch gears to the residential burglaries, and we had a little discussion just on the law a little bit, because a lot of people will call a burglary a home invasion, or they'll call it a robbery. In legal terms, those are much different animals. And so what we're talking about is residential burglary. Entering a house or remaining behind a house to commit a theft or another felony, basically. Home invasion is breaking into a house to commit a crime against a person, cause some type of battery or murder. Robbery is a person-to-person thing where I'm taking something by threat or force. So burglary, I think there's a lot of things going on. People think this is nighttime thing and leave your lights on. Most burglaries happen during the day, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. I think one of the things that we have to realize, and we had a long discussion on, at our meeting about proper analysis and properly defining a problem, and why the proper analysis and proper definition leads to hopefully a better result. So anyway, defining a problem is that we have currently, since we had one in October, and the rest of them were in November and December, and I think we've had a couple early this month, and that they're forcing entry to the rear of usually single-family homes. We've had two apartments that were burglarized as well. Generally, they occur Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. They happen between 12:00 PM and 7:00 PM. The concentration is north, the north end of the city, north of 75th, east of Cass, but they have happened other places. And again, they're forcing open their rear door about two-thirds of the time, front door about a quarter of the time, and typically take money and jewelry. So, you know, obviously for us, that means some how to patrol those areas or area. And so you, a lot of times, you may not see us patrolling, because obviously, one of the things you want to do is catch the bad guy. That's the easiest way of prevention, is to put the prolific offender away. And so we have different strategies with unmarked vehicles and decoy operations, surveillance operations, those type of things going on. And then the other days of the week, Sunday through Wednesday, you probably might see more vehicles, marked cars, because, again, it's perception more than anything, and try to put public at ease that the police are there and they're doing those patrols. Some other things, the city's talked a number of times about cameras and registering cameras, and we've made a discussion about some different things, about affordability of cameras and lighting and the such. So then, so again, it's just a matter of having the proper analysis and appropriate goal, thoughtful strategy, and then committed execution. And police officers love catching thieves. It's the fun part of the job. And so it doesn't take a lot to motivate them into a strategy. So once you give them all the information about the MO, the location, day of the week, time of day, and the like, they'll go out and get it done. So hopefully with all that information, we'll see what happens. Lot of information, but any questions?
Chief, when you live in a community like Darien and you have an incident or a second incident, a lot of people are drawn to the conclusion, again, this is social media, that we have a high crime rate. And you did note the drop in the crime rate over the last four years. Could you bring, could you mention that again?
Yeah, I was talking about specifically burglary to motor vehicle, but the, we'll talk about the total crime. So from 2009 to about 2016, trying to do a quick average in my head, probably about 370-ish total crimes for the city. And then it starts dropping tremendously. So, there it is. So last year, or yeah, 2019, there was only 190 crimes for the city. Say only, again, 190 is too many, but when you look at where we were, a high in 2014 of 436, and now we're at 190, that's more than half of the crimes have been reduced. So significantly reduced. Good, safe community, but, you know, police working in harmony with the community, some of the things we discussed tonight can hopefully drive that number down even more.
I attended a State of the County informational meeting with Dan Cronin and Bob Berlin, who's our state's attorney for DuPage County, and Bob Berlin pointed out that this is, what we've experienced over the last couple of months is not unique to Darien. That in fact, DuPage, all of DuPage County has seen the increase in residential and car burglaries. And not that that was okay, but I didn't want people to think that our community was being targeted. Nice communities like Darien, nice places to live are why these guys come out here and they try to break into our cars and our houses. So this is something that is going on in DuPage County in general.
Yes, I, that's a tough one. Sometimes I throw it out there, sometimes I don't, just because sometimes it looks like an excuse. Well, everybody else is doing it, so yeah, but I'm not the chief of everybody at a place else. But you're right, when we had 12, our surrounding area has had 67. So it is a situation that needs to be resolved and quickly.
Thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Any questions for the chief or any questions for Mr. Gondak? We're leaving you alone tonight, Dan.
I appreciate that. Budget time is coming up, though, so.
That takes us to our Treasurers' Report. We have a warrant tonight. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 192019, the amount of $1,253,910.47 from listed funds. Payroll for the period ended January 16th, and the amount of $274,355.71, for a total to be approved of $1,528,266.18.
We have a motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant's been approved. Takes us to standing committee reports. Any of the Aldermen have reports for the council? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mayor. The Municipal Services Committee will be conducting its January meeting a week from today, on January 27th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
The Police Committee met this evening, and we passed the minutes for the November 18th, 2019, and have submitted those to the Clerk's Office. Our next meeting will be held on February 17th, 2020, at 6:00 PM across the street in the police training room, per agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The Economic Development Committee will be meeting on February 12th at 7:00 PM, and yes, February 12th at 7:00 PM in council chambers. And the Admin Finance Committee will be meeting on February 3rd at 6:00 PM in the upstairs conference room before the council meeting. And then we will be starting on February 19th, the committee of a whole. We will be starting our budget meetings and workshops.
And again, those meetings are open. Anyone who's interested in seeing how we formulate our budget for the upcoming fiscal year, they are welcome to attend those meetings.
I have one correction. The Police Committee meeting will not meet on Monday, the 17th. It'll be on Tuesday, the 18th, because the 17th is a holiday for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Does anybody have, in the audience, have a question with regard to anything that's on our agenda tonight? If not, it takes us to old business, and there being none, we move to the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of a raffle license bond requirement for the Watts of Love. Consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Historical Society. Item C, consideration of a motion to accept strategic communication plan prepared by Metro Strategies. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to approve a proposal for Metro Strategies Incorporated to provide communications and public engagement services, along with policy, issue advocacy, planning, and project implementation services. And item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Clark Mosquito for an additional three years. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. End the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda is approved. It takes us to new business. We have one item. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve an agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC to provide full requirements, electricity supply, and related services for the city's electric aggregation program. Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any discussion? If none, the roll.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The item is approved. Questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Anybody on the council have anything they'd like to add? Alderman Clistic?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to take a split second acknowledging today is Martin Luther King Day. When I sit and reflect back myself, I am reflective of sort of his work even in our community. One of the things the mayor mentioned when he visited Hinsdale South, asked students what they believe is really special about Darien, and I quote, "When asked students what's special, or most special about living about Darien, they mentioned diversity." And I come to think that the late Dr. Martin Luther King had a little bit to do with that, so just acknowledge him on his birthday, on his day-to-day. And secondly, with the budget coming up, a quick question for Brian, and also for the new members, is there a process if we want to add anything to the budget or anything beforehand? I know usually the mayor, you guys added on there, but is there any process, for example, if we wanted to add anything on there? For example, last year, the mayor brought up Stergenics and allocated budget for that as a alderman. Is there a process or procedure, for example, if any, the new alderwoman or man had any thing they wanted to add?
No, just send me an email if you have, if you have any suggestions. That's for all the elected officials, if you had any suggestions, send them directly.
Okay, we discussed potentially like a camera system on the police committee. I know it's sort of late and you guys are already deep in the budget session, but maybe that's something that could potentially be put on there and discussed later, so.
Yeah, you can do that, and if something comes up during the budget and you didn't send emails, bring it up during the budget meetings as well. But it's obviously helpful ahead of time, yes.
Yeah, because you guys have to do homework, quotes, or whatever the case may be. So I know there's a lot of work on your side.
Mr. Gombeck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and the committee members, we have an agenda item next week. It's basically this public workspace allocation study. It's going to be the final report from our consultant in regards to our space. So any of the elected officials that have not seen our public works facility, I'd like to take a moment and possibly have the opportunity to meet with you on individual basis at the building. I met with several of you already. Again, it's for the space allocation needs. And at the same time, any of our residents, if they'd like to come and see our current facilities, be more than happy to accompany them. Please give me a call.
I'd strongly encourage it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Dan, I know we, you and I talked about this before, is there an opportunity, though, for some of the aldermen to visit one of your recommended sites nearby? You know, I think like Payless has a nice municipalities, building and stuff to be able for our aldermen to get a tour through one of those facilities? Because I think that'd be helpful to see, okay, you know, I've seen what you have now today, but what good can we have in the future?
I'm currently working on it, and I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to take a match, you know, with the population and the amount of vehicles to be able to take the members there. We're not, you know, again, no one's looking for something above and beyond just for what we need today and potentially tomorrow.
Biggest thing is just to utilize the space that we have, because if you go to a place that's got, you know, a big facility, you still got to put it on that footprint. So that's a, I think that's a...
You don't have to put it on that footprint. That footprint could be somewhere else.
Anything else?
Is there a counterpoint, Mayor, to Dan's presentation?
And we're off.
I didn't know Dan was gonna...
Are we starting the budget process already?
I didn't know Dan was gonna bring that commercial up, but...
I have to caution everyone, though, when we, when we take a look at this, I don't think there's anyone who's been a bigger advocate for public works and municipal services in terms of the site that they have than I am with all my years on the municipal services committee. I will tell you that one of the best trainings to be an alderman is to be a mayor first, because I've been able to sit down in budget meetings this year, this year with Dan and with Brian, and with Lisa, and with staff. And it's really an eye-opening procedure when you look at how we try to cover, how we try to provide the services that we provide. We provide excellent services to our residents. We need to actually sell our residents on what we do. I think we need to do a better job, and I think Metro Strategies will do that. But before we go jumping on the bandwagon, and I don't mean to, I know how Dan feels about this. I think we need to be cautious with regard to expenditures in terms of street program, ditch projects, et cetera, et cetera. And I think you guys need to take a look at the whole picture, which you will when we start that budget process. So I would caution you, because there is no horn of plenty out there. Brian Vanna has assured me of that.
Believe me, he's assured me also, Mr. Mayor.
And in all fairness, you know, the department heads, and as again, as we get to the budget, if I'll get requests from the department heads and I take those out of the budget, I'll leave that at least for the draft budget in, as a line item, but show no money. That way, at least the council gets to see, we had talked about a number of things. So the building will be one example of things Dan put in and I took out, but you'll see a line there for it.
Took it out?
We're still in draft stage, Dan. This is only a little commercial of the day-to-day, Dan and myself.
Yeah, this is what I deal with. I'm of the firm belief, though, that I would really like to engage in a conversation with this council with regard to what we would need to expend on both the property as well as a new facility. Because if that's a decision you make as a council, then you're making sacrifices in other areas, you know, because it's a cash flow issue. We need to take a look at priorities, and I think it's really critical. But I would like to know what all of you think with regard to that. And it's, I think that sometime in the future, this is going to be something that has to be addressed. So when we get to that item in the budget, while it's not in the budget, that figure's there, we could engage in that conversation, have that dialogue.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I think we got to be careful how we, you know, say things and approach things, because, you know, our municipal services, that's our infrastructure, that's what drives our city. When we sit back and we can vote on a $366,000 economic development for a golf course and $150,000, you know, for a facades and stuff, and then yet, a week later, we're saying, well, you know, we got to be careful what we're spending, you know, what we're approaching on the municipal services. I think we sent, I think we sent a skewed message to our citizens. I know what you're, I know what you're, I know what you're meaning, but we got to be careful with the message that we portray, because we vote, we act one way, you know, this week, and then we say something the following week, and I just don't want to confuse the residents.
But I think, just to highlight it, when you talk about 366 for Carriage Greens, when you're talking about a new municipal services committee, you're building, you're probably talking at least $5 million to purchase the property and at least $10 million to build it. There's a big difference between $15 million and $366,000.
But you start at $1 at a time, Mayor.
But, and the 366 is a loan, not an expenditure.
Right. And again, and Dan knows this, I've been the biggest supporter of that over the years, but I've had my eyes opened going through this process this year. I would love to hear and have you engage in that discussion and like to know your feelings. You know, Ted, you've been on council with me for a long time, and I know you have certain feelings. We have visited that site, and we have seen some of the issues and the problems, and we were real happy when we got the solved storage facility.
Correct.
You know, so, but I would like to know what Eric and Mary and Tom, and Lester really think about that, because that is a great financial commitment, it really is. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't have the discussion. It just means we need to be careful about how we would proceed. Yeah, I think it's imperative we have that discussion. I mean, other communities such as Westmont now are putting in a brand-new facility. So municipalities do find a way. I just don't want to see us spending good dollars after bad.
And I think what's critical here, it's good to have the discussion, but you also have to be prepared to let the residents know, okay, we want the good, but the good is going to cost this. And in order to do that, you got to have the guts to be able to approach the residents and say, okay, it's going to cost you another $100 or $200 on your tax bill, if that's the direction you want to go. You can't just hide it and say, okay, well, we'll figure some other way of doing it. We'll cut $10 in office supplies. That can't happen on something that magnitude. And I think the mayor, you said, he's been probably the biggest proponent over the years, but I don't know, it's sounding like you're, now that you're getting down into more of the detail, you're realizing there isn't a limited number of those dollars, unless, again, the council's willing to say, okay, this is definitely a need, and it's something we're comfortable going to the residents for.
Yeah, but I think the biggest image that residents have of the city is through the municipal services. That's what people, that's what people see. So I think if they understand that, that comes with the cost.
But there are different costs associated with that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But you also have to, you also have to protect a huge investment in equipment that we have over there. And I think that's critical. That's huge. That is, and that has always been my argument, that we have $250,000 trucks that sit outside and the hydraulics can freeze. I mean, who's going to have a $250,000 car sitting in their driveway that's not put in the garage? I mean, let's be honest. Okay? It's not going to happen.
Well, we definitely have to put the snowplow somewhere where the elements don't get to them, I think, is what...
Mary?
I just think it's important that we all educate ourselves on what the possible options are. And I definitely plan to tour the facility this week, hopefully. I'm going to coordinate that with Mr. Gombeck. But I also feel like we need to, we, from what I understand, having not been there, that there's, you know, obviously some dire needs, or, you know, what are our options? That's what I'd like to know. Like, besides just leveling the place and building a brand-new facility, we, I think we're going to need to know what our options are and alternatives, because, you know, I think I've seen firsthand with other facilities, using the high school as an example, when you kind of kick the can down the road too long, then you do get to a point where you're faced with, you know, pretty dire straits, and then you have no choice. So what can be done now, what should be done in the future? I guess I'd just like to see the various options as we discuss.
That's why I think the discussion should be, should be there, because I think we need to have the figures presented, we need to have the options presented to us. You know, where is there property available that we could purchase, where we could build a facility that would suit our needs? What do we do with the current site? How much could we sell that current site for? And how could we utilize that money towards the purchase of property or towards a new facility? What would a new facility cost? What's, you know, all of those items need to be discussed. And then the cost to the taxpayers, the cost to the city, needs to be pointed out as well, because as Michael said, it's not going to come for free. It's going to cost the residents of the city of Darien. You know, and to be quite honest, you know, I told Brian today, there are times I look out my front window, and I want to see a Darien police officer driving by, knowing my neighborhood's safe. Saturday, this last Saturday, I wanted to look out my window, and I wanted to see the Darien municipal services guys plowing my street. We want all those services, but all those services come with a cost, and we have to weigh one versus the other. Yeah, I think it's important, I mean, I just went to my second tour of the facility, and I think it's important before the budget meeting that everybody, if they haven't gone there recently, to go there. And also, I think if we can try to visit a new site, I think that would be helpful, too. That way, we all have the knowledge base that we need going into those meetings.
Mayor, as Dan mentioned at the next municipal services committee, the council did authorize this year a, kind of a space needs study, Dan, I think, looking at the current facility. So the council did authorize that as a first step, and so at the next meeting, you'll take a look at that and see what that consultant recommended in terms of the current facility.
There's a quick question with regards to cash flow. Do you have to do, for example, the building, you know, say $3 million, do you have to pay for that upfront, or can you do a bond for over five years and pay that back?
If, to build a municipal facility, like we're kind of talking about in general terms tonight, would require a bond.
Okay, regardless, okay.
Anything else? I think that tonight's discussion was a really discussion. I'm sure we'll have more fun discussing this when the budget...
We'll pick it up tomorrow morning, if anybody's interested.
Brian and I will be talking about this tomorrow with Mr. Gombeck, and we'll close the door behind us. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who motioned, and who seconded?
Ted motioned. And Vaughn. Thank you, everybody.